Hello and welcome. I'm so glad you could join us last week and here we are back for another round. Again, my name is Benjamin Nye and I am your host as we journey in the Old Testament through two incredible books. Right now, we're journeying in the book of Tobit and then we'll be following that up with the book of Judith. I hope and pray you've been well this past week. I don't know what adventures you might have going on in your life, but it seems like in this, this season, there's always something wild happening, right? 2020, a year to remember. One of my, growing up, I love reading books. Somewhat embarrassing, but I'll embrace it, but like my grandfather had these concrete little square, square, uh, concrete slabs. And one for each grandkid and we could decorate it however we wanted to. And so anyways, in mine are the words, "I heart books." So guilty. So anyways, I love, it's a long way of saying I love to read. And so, uh, one of the coolest things about having kids is you get to read to them. And you get to reread some of your favorite childhood books, right? And it'd be a little bit awkward if you were to go home and read the Boxcar Children or the Hardy Boys. But when you're a dad, it's completely normal. So anyways, uh, one of, one of the book series I've been reading right now with my kids is, um, the Laura Ingraham Wilder books, uh, Little House on the Prairie, little, and then that series. And so, um, anyways, it's been great reading them because you know, we, we, we think the 2020s are rough and it is like for sure. But when you, uh, when you get to journey, uh, with a little girl out in the, in the West back in the 1800s, you're like, wow, they also had it. Had it hard. So anyways, it's been, it's been fun to, to, uh, read that with the kids and just, uh, yeah, to, uh, to experience the, the, the West. So anyways, again, I hope and pray you're, you're all doing well and with whatever challenges are happening in our lives and in and through it all, we cling to Jesus Christ who is our rock, our strength and our salvation. Before we begin, I guess just a few announcements. One, I apologize, uh, last week our class kind of cut short. So, uh, we, we, if you, in case you're wondering like, what happened? Yeah, the, the recording stopped. So, um, today we'll be picking up right where we left off last week. Also too, I just want to invite you, um, to feel free to share the video. Thanks to modern technology, right? Normally you would have to be physically present and there you miss. Well nowadays, the wonders of YouTube, the internet continues. So if this is something that you enjoy or think will be fruitful for someone in your life, whether it's maybe a relative, a child, um, an aunt, maybe it's someone you've been praying for. Feel free to, to share, share that, share the video and invite them to take this journey with us. All right, let's begin with prayer. And so as I mentioned last week, uh, we'll be reading a brief, uh, brief reflections from Cardinal Winn Van Toon. And using that as, um, to guide our, 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 our opening prayer. And so the kind of, the theme from this, this last week was this, um, this challenge that he faced, right? He, um, but a brief recap before we begin, uh, he, you know, he, he's been just newly transitioned diocese. He's made a bishop and, and then he's immediately arrested and taken away from his diocese, away from his people. And under house arrest, you know, hundreds of miles away. But the, the, his response to that in prayer was just that, that challenge to not wait, but to fill the present moment with love. And so we'll kind of pick up there. He writes, "I will not wait. I will live the present moment, filling it to the brim with love." In the Gospel, the apostles wanted to take the easy road. "Lord, send the people away. They can find food." "But Jesus wants to act in the present moment. Give them something to eat yourselves." "On the cross, when the thief said to Jesus, 'Remember me when you come into your kingdom,' he answered, 'Today you'll be with me in paradise.'" "In the word 'today,' we hear all of Jesus' forgiveness and love." Saint Maximilian Kolbe lived and taught this radicalism when he repeated to his novices, "Everything absolutely with no conditions." "I once heard Don Helder Kamara say, 'Life is learning to love.'" "And Mother Teresa Calcutta wrote to me, 'The important thing is not how many actions we perform, but the intensity of love that we put into each action.'" "How does one reach this intensity of love in the present moment? I suddenly recalled, 'I must live each day, each moment, as if it were the last one of my life.' "I leave aside everything accidental and concentrate only on the essential. Then each word, each gesture, each telephone call, each decision I make is the most beautiful of my life. "I give my love to everyone, my smile to everyone. "I'm afraid of wasting even one second by living it without meaning. "Only one moment exists for you in all its beauty, and that is the present moment. "Live it completely in the love of God. "If your life is built up like a large crystal with millions of such moments, it'll be a wonderfully beautiful life. "Can't you see how easy it could be?" And so we take that to prayer. In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord God, we give you thanks for the words and the wisdom of Cardinal Winn Van Toon. And that, that exhortation to live the present moment, to fill it to the brim with love. So hard, but in some ways it's so simple and easy. We get overwhelmed sometimes by like, what am I going to do about this, this, this event next week? This impending conflict, this whatever. And we, it's easy to get overwhelmed and yet right now we're only living one moment and that's this moment. And is it, is it possible for me to live this moment in love? And I think we can find that a lot more doable. And so we pray for that grace, God, to live this moment, fill it to the brim of love. And it's never live a moment that's devoid of meaning. But to live it to the fullest and that, that means a relationship with you. That means a yes to you. It means to be an epic lover, to love our neighbor as ourself and to love you with, with, with our all. So we, we ask and pray for that, that grace and that strength. In your holy name, in the session of our blessed mama, we pray, "Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. "Blessed art thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. "Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. "In the name of the Father and the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen." Okay, so, uh, we, uh, made a little bit of headway. We covered, uh, most of chapter one and that's kind of where we got cut off. Okay? And so we will, we will pick up in, uh, chapter one, verse 16, okay? So by way of recap, we meet Tobit, a good guy, the, the hero, the hero of the story. And just a wonderful man, a faithful, right? Despite, uh, his own fellow countrymen failing and not, 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 uh, living up to the task. And yet we see, see his life go from bad to worse. The North attacked and conquered, taken to exile. And then if they weren't living it then, they sure as heck aren't living the faith in exile. And yet he persists and continues. "But not fifty days passed," I'm sorry, so we're in Tobit, one, verse 21. "But not fifty days passed before two of Sinner Shereef's sons killed him and they fled to the mountains of Ararat. "Then Eshad Adon, his son, reigned in his place and he appointed Ahikar, the son of my brother Ananel, "over all the counts of his kingdom and over the entire administration. "Ahikar interceded for me and I returned to Nineveh. "Now Ahikar was cupbearer, keeper of the signet and charged administration of the counts. "For Eshad Adon had appointed him second to himself. He was my nephew." Okay? And so what he had lost in that previous paragraph has, um, has now been returned to him. Let's move on into chapter two. "When I arrived home and my wife Anna and my son Tobias were restored to me at the feast of Pentecost, "which is the sacred festival of the seven weeks, a good dinner was prepared for me and I sat down to eat. "Upon seeing the abundance of food, I said to my son, "Go and bring whatever poor man of our brother and you may find among the exiles in Nineveh who is mindful of the Lord. "And he shall eat together with me. I will wait for you until you come back. "So Tobias went out to look for some poor person of our people. "When he came back, he said, 'Father.'" "I replied, 'Here I am, my child.'" "And he went on to say, 'Look, Father, one of our own people has been murdered and thrown into the marketplace. "Now he lies there strangled. So before I taste anything, I sprang up, removed the body to a place of shelter until sunset, when I might bury it. "And when I returned, I washed myself and ate my food in sorrow. "Then I remembered the property of Amos, how he said against Bethel, "Your feast shall be turned into mourning and all your songs into lamentation, and I wept." So beautiful, beautiful paragraph. So a couple of things stand out. One is going to be the, the dynamic between Tobias and his son. Between Tobias, um, and Tobit. I'm sorry, between, yeah, yeah. And that is, I, I love the witness that the father Tobias offers to his son. I'm sorry, the, the witness that Tobit provides to his son Tobias. Okay? Um, you know, up to this point, we, we, we've been focusing on Tobit. But here in this paragraph, we see how he's inviting his son to participate in that way of life. As he sends him out. And so he invites him to be involved in that ministry to others, right? And in this paragraph, so many echoes of, you know, the parable in the Gospel of Jesus. You know, where there, there, there's still room for the banquet. Go find people, fill it in. And so just a beautiful image of, of Tobit as, uh, the heavenly father in that sense. You know, he, he doesn't, he doesn't sit down without extending that invitation. And so I, I love, I love, I love that. I love the fact that the father invites the son into, into that ministry. And then I love Tobias's response, right? He runs and tells his father, right? "One of our own has been murdered." And so what, what gives him this, this idea? That this is a concern, this is a problem, right? Of course, it's the, it's the, um, it's the witness of dad. It's, 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 it's that example. And so he, he goes to his dad. And so I, I love that, right? His, his father is that source of strength and it's that source of that, that, that he goes to him, that dad's going to know what to do, dad's going to know how to, to rectify. And so just the, the, the beauty of that relationship and that dynamic. And it's interesting, right? How dad doesn't eat. They, they, they don't, they don't even take a bite, which is tough, right? Especially for those of us that struggle with our relationship with food, right? I mean, you sit down to dinner and it's hot and the mashed potatoes are steaming, the butter is melting and oh, your taste buds are watering, right? You're basically drooling on yourself, all right? But he, he, he immediately gets up. There's a sense of urgency. And so I love that. And then just the, the reality of like, he has a heart for his people, right? And so the, the feast turns into mourning. Like he literally weeps. And, and so even though, you know, in this particular moment, they're provided for, they have food. And, and, and many of his own people have not been faithful, both recently as well as in times past. And yet he has a heart for them. And so there's something beautiful about that, um, in his heart, his heart for his people, his heart for others. You know, do, do we have a heart for our brothers and sisters? Do we have a heart for them in the midst of their sufferings? Do we have a heart for those, even those that we wouldn't identify as being holy or perfect, right? And in whatever shape or form that might take. Do, do we desire their good? Do, do we mourn, do we mourn for them? Do we have a heart for them? And so just a genuine love, love for his, his brothers and sisters. So what happens next? Verse seven. "When the sun had set, I went and dug a grave and buried the body. "And my neighbors laughed at me and said, 'He is still not afraid. "He's already been hunting down to be put to death for doing this and he ran away. Yet here he is burying the dead again. "On the same night after I, Tobit, returned from burying the dead, I went into my courtyard and slept by the wall of the courtyard. "My face was uncovered because of the heat. "I did not know that there were sparrows on the wall and their fresh droppings fell into my open eyes "and white films formed on my eyes. "I went to physicians to be healed, but the more they treated me with ointments, the more my vision was obscured by the white films. "And so I became completely blind. "For four years I remained unable to see. All my Kendra were sorrow for me. "And Ahikar took care of me for two years until he went to Amias." Okay, so a couple of things here. One is the derision of his neighbors, right? You can almost hear the echoes of the words of the crowd when Jesus hangs on the cross, right? He, he saved others, but he couldn't save himself. You think of the Beatitudes, blessed are they when they persecute you. And so they, they, they mock him, they make fun of him, they deride him. And so that, that, the, the strength of perseverance in the mix, in the midst of, of public derision. And so again, that's something that, that is a challenge for us as Catholics today. Not with all that we believe, but there's, but there's a few things I can think of where that is not currently publicly socially acceptable. It's not going to help us win friends and influence others, right? There, there's, there's times of mockery. And so just the, the witness of Tobit of, of doing, doing what's good, doing what's right, um, even in the midst of, of, of that, that mockery. And then you have, oh, the tragedy, right? If, if everything hasn't been bad enough for this poor guy, um, he now becomes blind, okay? And part of the backstory there, um, going back to the laws of Leviticus, um, in Deuteronomy, but, but probably why he didn't go back into the house to sleep was because he had just touched a corpse and the law is about being clean and unclean. And so he, he stays in the courtyard. And so there again, he's trying to keep the law. He's, he's showing his faithfulness and yet what does he get in return? Burp poop in the eyes, right? Which leads to, to blindness. And so again, like in this sense, Tobit, the book of Tobit is in some ways very similar to the book of Job, right? Wrestling with that question of why do bad things happen to good people, right? Why does God, how does God love me when he keeps on making me suffer, right? And sometimes even seemingly the more I'm faithful to him, right? And so, um, you know, it, it's interesting in this walk of faith in that, um, Jesus at times offers us the cross, right? "If you would follow me, you must deny yourself, take up your cross," right? Which is a brutal form of execution, like what? And so sometimes our, our faith involves the cross. And, and sometimes it can be hard to comprehend for sure. And yet part of that is Catholics and Christians is we, we see it as an opportunity to cling more closely to Christ. What kind of God have we who took on our flesh and suffered that out of love? And so I may not understand the sufferings I'm undergoing right now and it doesn't make it easy. But I can, I, I can embrace it in such a way as this opportunity to walk with Christ. To get to know my God, who while I was yet a sinner, would die for me. And so it's, it's hard. It's, it's one of the toughest lessons of life. That response to suffering. And yet, and yet as Catholics and Christians, um, we talked about this, I think last week some, but but there's this idea of even when the world does its worst, it can't separate us from the love of God. All right? Doesn't mean suffering is going to be fun. Doesn't mean we're going to sign up for it, but, but it, it can't separate us from the love of God. And what a gift that is, what a blessing that is. And a call, I think, to, to cling, to cling to that, right? When, when things are stripped away, right? We're trying to grasp for something, for anything. And it's an opportunity to, to cling ever more closely to our God. Continuing on verse 11. "Then my wife Anna earned money at woman's work. She used to send the products to the owners and they paid her wages. "One day, the seventh of distress, when she cut off a piece she had woven and sent it to the owners, "they paid her full wages and they also gave her a kid. "When she returned to me and began to bleat, so I called her and said to her, 'Where'd you get the kid? "It is not stolen, is it? Return it to the owners. For it's not right to eat what is stolen.' "And she said, 'It was given to me as a gift in addition to my wages.' "But I did not believe her and told her to return it to the owners. And I blushed for her. "Then she replied to me, 'Where are your charities and your righteous deeds? "You seem to know everything.'" So again, we see, we see a poor Tobit struggling, right? And so he's, the, the, he's not able to provide for his family and that's hard, right? That, that, that's hard when you, you're, you know how to do it, you're capable of doing it and yet you're not. Um, and there's nothing you can do about it and that, that like, that, that loss of that, that freedom, that independence. And so that, that's hard. It's, it's, it's its own humility. It's its own humbling. And so we kind of, we, we, we see him struggling in that dynamic with his wife and that, that lack of, of trust with her. And, and she, she kind of gives it right back to him and, and, and she asks him, you know, a, a good question, all right? It's something that I think at times we need to ask ourselves is like, maybe, maybe some of us, probably not me, but some of us like, we're good at, we're good at being charitable, loving people, right? But, but, but maybe we, we, we struggle at being on the receiving end, you know? And so obviously the call to be charitable, the call also to receive that, that gift from others. And sometimes I think we can, it leaves us uncomfortable. It leaves us kind of like, you know, how, how do I receive that? Like, no, 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 I'm supposed to serve you. And so, you know, Tobit's done a beautiful job of serving others, but here he's kind of struggling with the generosity of others. And it's, he's kind of wrestling with that. And so his wife's reminding him of that, right? In the, in the same spirit with which you, you gave beautifully and good, right? Are you able to receive that from others, especially when you're, you're kind of handicapped? Chapter three. "Then in my grief, I wept and I prayed in anguish, saying, 'Righteous are you, O Lord. "All your deeds are just and all your ways are mercy and truth. "You render true and righteous judgment forever. "And now, O Lord, remember me and look favorably upon me. "Do not punish me for my sins and for my unwitting offenses and those which my fathers committed before you. "For we disobeyed your commandments. "You gave us over to plunder, captivity and death. "You made us the talk, the byword, and object of reproach in all the nations among which you have dispersed us. "And now your judgments, judgments are true and exacting penalty "for me, for my sins and those of my fathers, because we did not keep your commandments. "For we did not walk in truth before you. "And now deal with me according to your pleasure. "Command my spirit to be taken up, that may be released from the face of the earth and become dust. "For it's better for me to die than to live, "because I have heard false reproaches and great is the sorrow within me. "Command that I now be released from my distress. "Release me to go to the eternal abode and do not, O Lord, turn your face away from me. "For it's better for me to die than to see so much distress in my life and to listen to such insults." Oh, your heart, right? Your heart breaks, your heart bleeds for Tobit. What a, what a, what a, 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 a beautiful, yet, yet distressing heartfelt prayer, right? He weeps and he prays. And so so much to say here. A couple, a couple of things is, what, what a beautiful image of prayer, right? In which it, because it's, it's real, it's honest, right? He, he's not necessarily telling God what he wants, what he thinks God wants to hear, like he's speaking from his heart. And we, we see some images of this throughout the Old Testament. It's a, a reminder to us to, to, to have a relationship with our God, right? What's, what's a sign of a good relationship? Being real, being authentic, being able to talk with your heart. Not having to put on walls or masks and be, try to weave the, the conversation just right. And so you, you know, back in Genesis, you think of the image of Jacob wrestling with the, the angel in the cave as an image of prayer. You have the beautiful image of Hannah in First Samuel, right? Where she's praying and Samuel thinks she's drunk, right? And again, I think they're odd, maybe peculiar, funny examples of prayer, wrestling with an angel, right? A woman babbling incoherently. But I, but I think that the part of it though is just this reminder to, to have a real relationship with God, right? Sometimes we, maybe we approach it in a sanitized version with a heavy dose of Purell, right? And bleach and Clorox, right? And yet, ah, like, like, I mean, if the heart of relationships, love, like God wants you, like come as you are. And in that love, like he's going to take us somewhere, right? He's going to take us to the heights, but come as you are, right? The, the, the call of Christianity, the call of relationship with God isn't like, become holy so that you can come to God. It's like, no, 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 no. Like come to God, come as you are now, today, all right? I mean, as Jesus says, like, I've come to seek and save the lost, right? I haven't come, I haven't come, yeah, for the perfect, like I've come, I've come for you, I've come for me, right? I've come for the, the schlub in each of us. So yeah, I think that stands out. The realness of Tobit's prayer. And the, the honesty, the heartfeltness of it. What else? There, 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 there's a, there's a line in here where he says, um, he's, he's, he's talking about, he's talking about their failures, their sins. And he, and he says, he says this line, the very end of verse five. He says, "For we did not walk in truth before you." I love that, right? I, I think that's in a sentence, that's, that's the moral life, right? I, I think sometimes we struggle maybe in, with morality, we struggle, well, for sure. But we struggle, especially struggle with the, the way it's presented and the way we receive that. And, and so many times, you know, I think we see it as this list of rules. It's this burden that's being placed on me. It's this carrot and stick approach, right? Do this so you can get heaven. And, and I love what he says, cause like, morale, that's not morality. Well, you, sure, you can, you can approach it like that if you want, have fun, okay? But that's not morality. Morality, like you can boil it down to living in truth. There's this great quote by C.S. Lewis and basically he says, like, religion isn't something God invented. It's God. Like it's, it's him. It's, it's who he is. And so like the moral life are, are, is, isn't some rules God invented? It's an opportunity, it's, it's a reflection of his nature, right? What is the heart of the call to Christianity Catholicism, right? It's love, to love the Lord your God with your whole heart, mind, soul and love your neighbor, yourself. Why? Because God is love. One God in three persons, how do they connect? How do they relate? It's a relationship of love, right? And that love is, is poured out in creation, right? Why does God create? He, because he, he loves, was the high form of creation. It's man. What's man made for? The seventh day to rest, to be in relationship, to be in love with our God, right? And, and the call, the, the two, the man and the woman to, 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 to leave their, their father and mother and to become one flesh. Why? So that they can love and that love can then be fruitful and give to their children, right? So that, that, ah, this is so good, right? But the, but the more, the point is the moral life, morality is an opportunity to live in truth. It's, it's an opportunity. It, it's not arbitrary. It's not these things that God invented and made up, right? And so, um, and so that, that's at the heart of it, okay? And, and so far too often we, we, we miss that. We miss that in both the way it's taught and communicated as well as the way in which it's received. And that has devastating consequences, right? And so that's why like, if you fall in love with God, if you fall in love with the person of Jesus Christ, okay? It's a game over. It's a game changer. Why? Cause morality's changed. It's, it's an opportunity to walk in that relationship, to live in truth. It's not your enemy. In fact, it's a good, it's a blessing, it's a gift. It fosters your love relationship with God, right? It's like, it's like not committing adultery. Is that a burden? Or, or is that, does it, does it, does it foster the, the great love of your life with your spouse, right? Is it this horrific imposition? No, like anyways, I guess I could go on forever on that, but like, we, we, we need a fundamental change in our perspective with morality, right? It, it's not our enemy. Um, I mean, it can be for sure, but like, it, it's not our enemy. It's, it's an opportunity to live in truth, a, a truth that flourishes when we fall in love with our God. What else? So the obvious, he prays for death. Yeah, so the obvious, he prays for death. He's having a bad day, which was preceded by a bad week, which preceded by bad several years, right? So he's, he's in a low point, right? But in this low point, who does he turn to? He turns to God, right? And, and it's interesting, right? He doesn't even blame God, which is probably more than I could do in that moment, right? But he doesn't even blame guys, like, I get it, like, this is maybe not even me directly, but like, this is the fruit of what, of our people. Like you've given us, like you gave us the ten commandments, you formed us, like you taught us. You personally led us in the ark of the covenant, you gave us a bread from heaven. And what do we do? We rejected it, right? This is like, all that we're getting, we've more than earned, we've more than deserved, right? Um, but I'm tired. I'm exhausted. I'm old. I'm, I'm dying. I, 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 I don't blame you. I don't love you any less, but I wanna come home, like, call me home, like I've, 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 I fought hard and I don't, I, 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 I just trust my flesh in the, maybe in the future. And so I like, ah, take me home, right? Um, I, I grow weary. And so again, the, the honesty with that, um, and, and, and it's, it's turned to God and, and his prayer. And, and so, as we'll see, as we, we continue this, the story, does God hear and answer his prayer? And does he, does he hear and answer the prayer in the way that Tobit wants? And it's gonna be a powerful lesson to learn, right? Is careful what we pray for, right? Sometimes it's a good thing that God doesn't answer our prayers in the way we want, right? Um, a silly example, alright, but, but nevertheless, okay? True story, back in the day, little Benjamin and I, we, uh, we would pray in the car going to school. This was, um, I, I remember in my middle school years, we, part of our, our, our morning prayers, uh, my mom would lead, she, she was driving us and you know, we, we each get a turn to offer some intercessory prayers. So, true story, came to my turn and I would say some prayers out loud and then, I didn't wanna vocalize it, but interiorly I, I, I prayed, and dear God, give me a girlfriend. Like dear God, I really want a girlfriend. Like dear God, please help a girl fall in love with me. Right? And this was a prayer on more than one occasion that I would say. And guess what? God said, no. I did not have a middle school girlfriend. And you know what? That is good news. This is a thousand percent good news, right? Why? Cause that would have been terrible in a hundred different ways, right? Nothing good would have come from that. And so what a grace and blessing that God told me, no. So, um, so anyways, prayer is a funny thing, right? Um, and so the, uh, some, yeah, God sees not as we see and that's, that's a good thing. Let's read on, alright? So now, almost studying in verse seven, the story's gonna shift somewhat dramatically, okay? Uh, from in our focus, up to this point, Tobit's been our main character with his family, his wife, his son. Um, but now we're gonna meet a new character. The character is gonna play, um, in, uh, another significant role as we see the, the story woven. Um, so chapter three, verse seven. On the same day at Ekpatana in Media, it also happened that Sarah, the daughter of Raguel, was reproaching, was, was reproached by her father's maids, because she had been given to seven husbands. And the evil demon Asmodeus had slain each of them before he'd been with her as his wife. So the maids said to her, you are the one who kills your husbands. See, you've already had seven and have had no benefit from any of them. Why do you beat us? Cause your husbands are dead. Go with them. May we never see a son or daughter of yours. Okay, so, so we dive right into meeting Sarah. Not as much backstory as we got with Tobit. So there's this woman, her name's Sarah, and she's got a problem. Her husbands die on her wedding night. Is that awkward, embarrassing? Yes, to the extreme. And so the, the, the way the story reads, I, we're immediately meant to, um, I, I believe, I think to sympathize with her, but also to see the parallels in her predicament and Tobit's, right? Um, she too is mocked, right? She's mocked unjustly and, um, and, and she suffers, she, she, she struggles, okay? The, um, you know, it doesn't go into, to the why, but like, for whatever reason, she's plagued by this demon who's slaying her husbands. And so arguably through no fault of her own, right? And so just as Tobit suffered innocently, she too suffers, right? And so the, this, this, the shame and the humiliation, right? Uh, I could not even imagine, okay? And so again, I know it's kind of like a brash, like very quick, like we're thrown in, we meet her. Um, and, but yeah, um, it's a, oh man, right? Like wild, okay? Um, so let, let, let's read on, verse, verse 10. On that day, she was deeply grieved in spirit and wept. When she'd gone up to her father's upper room, she intended to hang herself. But she thought it over and said, never shall they reproach my father, saying to him, you only had one beloved daughter and she hanged herself because of her distress. And I shall bring his old age down in sorrow to the grave. It's better for me not to hang myself, but to pray the Lord that they may die and not listen to these reproaches anymore. At that same time, with hands outstretched toward the window, she prayed and said, blessed are you, O Lord, merciful God. Blessed is your holy and honor name forever. May all your works praise you forever. And now, O Lord, I've turned my eyes from my face towards you. Command that I be, that I be released from the earth, that I may hear reproach no more. You know, O Lord, that I'm innocent of any sin with man. That I did not stain my name with the name of my father and the land of my captivity. I am my father's only child. He has no child to be his heir. No near kinsman or kinsman's son, for whom I should keep myself as wife. Already, seven husbands of mine are dead. Why should I live? But if it be not pleasing you to take Mike alive, command that respect be shown to me and pity be taken upon me and that I will hear reproach no more. Hmm. So once again, I think we were clearly seeing that, quickly seeing that the parallels between Sarah and Tobit. Um, both in the earlier paragraph and now with this paragraph, okay? Um, in which they offer up a very similar prayer. Um, a couple, a couple of things with hers. So, so one is initially, she, she intends to kill herself, right? And thank God she doesn't. Um, but, but she, but she flirts with that, like she's tempted to that. Um, and, and, and even though she doesn't praise the Lord, right? She, she still prays for death, similar to Tobit. Um, and so very clearly, this, this is going to be a, a, a theme. Um, and something we're looking at in this story, right? Um, and I don't, I don't wanna give away the ending, spoil the ending, but like, we, we have to at least address it immediately. And the, the answer is like, we, as Christians and Catholics, right? We're called to be a people of hope, period, right? And it's, it's essential, right? Um, both, both hopes, sure, like in the here and now, like in the, the God is sovereign. And as much, as dark as the day might seem, as dark as the night might seem, like that there's a dawn. Like that, that, that our God is sovereign, our God is king, okay? But beyond the, the hope for the temp, the temporal, our, our hope ultimately lies in heaven. Alright, that, that Christ is king, that Christ is victorious, that the lamb that's slain is sitting on a throne of glory, okay? And so that the overarching, the war is won, like Christ is victorious, period. That will, that, that, that will never change, rather that is, nothing, nothing's more true than that, okay? And yet, right, like the, the, my battle, the battle, the battle for your soul and my soul, like that's being waged here and now, alright? And so we place our hope in Christ victorious. And so we as Catholics, we as Christians, like we have to root and ground our hope in that. In Christ's resurrection, and if Christ rose from dead, then, then I too shall rise, right? In the beatific vision in heaven itself, the wedding feast, the banquet of the lamb, right? Because, because there's gonna be some dark days. Like there's, there's, there's gonna be like not just dark days, but dark weeks and months. And, and, and it's hard. Um, suffering's rough. We kind of already talked about that earlier. But, but, but part of that is, in the midst of it all, is to place our hope in Christ, okay? So we, here on earth, we, we, we never know how the story unfolds, right? And so we, we, we have a hope there, but, but ultimately our hope is in eternity itself, right? And we have the beautiful witness of the saints of Damba for us. Many of whom lived in some of the worst experiences humanly possible. And yet they persevered in hope, right? And so such a, um, a desperately needed virtue and, and message today, right? When, when we as a culture are, um, are, are lacking hope, when we as a culture are experiencing depression and we as a culture are turning to, to suicide as a solution. Um, again, it depends on the, the statistics and demographics, right? But, but, but there's an alarming rise in the, in the, the cases of suicide. Obviously it's, it has a variety of, of factors. Um, but, but, but part of it is just, is, we, we as a society have been become unmoored from, from why we exist and, and a relationship with God, right? It, it, what, what do we then turn to when the world crumbles around us, right? And so, um, you know, the atheist might mock and say that it's our crutch. Um, it's our, the opioid for the masses, but, but of course we know that, that that's, that's, it's a lie, it's false, right? But, 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 but ah, like it has, we have something that our world is desperately crying out for, right? And this loss of identity and this loss of meaning. Uh, there's a, there's, there's a guy who, you know, who, who, who did some research and can basically said, like of all the great civilizations that have ever existed, like the modern Western world is the only civilization that does not teach its young why they exist, right? And then that, that, that's a, it's a terrifying thought, right? In, in our public school system, do we teach our young why they exist, right? And so if we're, if we're forming a generation that lacks an identity and lacks a destination, like is it any wonder then that, 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 that depression and, and suicide can, can work around the corner, right? And so obviously there's a variety of factors involved and like, there, you know, this isn't the only thing, but like, I, I think that's the heavy part of our discussion, like, um, and so we, we as Catholics, we as Christians, right? We're called to be people of hope. We're called to be an Easter people. And Hallelujah is our song, right? And like the, to draw our strength from the central mystery of our faith, right? That God became man and that God died for, for us on the cross and he rose. He rose on the third day, right? Oh, happy fault of Adam, they gave for us so great a victory, that through Christ we fallen upwards. Where it's taken from the exalt at the Easter vigil. Okay, so, does God immediately answer Tobit and Sarah's prayers? Are they executed? Um, let's find out. Now, I'm gonna cheat, uh, so to speak. I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip the next paragraph, verse sixteen through verse, actually just verse sixteen. Yeah, we're, we're gonna skip it, cause it's, it's, it, it tells the answer, right? And so at least for the, I'm sorry, sixteen seventeen. Uh, but yeah, for, at least for the purposes of our story, um, you can cheat if you want, you can read the two verses, but no, let's, um, we're not gonna spoil it. We're gonna, we're gonna keep reading, but it's gonna kind of, uh, tell us what's gonna happen. But we're, we're gonna, we're gonna experience it live, so to speak. Moving on, chapter four, verse one. On that day, Tobit remembered the money which he had left in trust with Gabriel and rages in media. And he said to himself, I've asked for death. Why do I not call my son Tobias, so I may explain to him about the money before I die? Just quickly there, uh, one thing I, I love about the book of Tobit is like it's got some humor in it, right? And I, I, you know, earlier I didn't mention it, but like when the bird poops in his eye, like that's kind of funny. It's dark humor and this is depressing, but like, it's somewhat humorous. But here again, like I, I find this hilarious, right? He's like, uh-oh, I just prayed to die and, like I, I actually, like I haven't written my last will and testament. Like I don't have my affairs in order. Oops. So again, so again, yeah, so he, so again, he, um, he prays to die, but his life's not in order. Uh-oh, like that's, that's no good. And so, um, so he, yeah, that, that, that's, that's funny, right? It's like, I should have waited to pray that until I did X, Y and Z. So, uh, verse three, so he called them and said, my son, my guy, bury me and do not neglect your mother. Honor her all the days of your life. Do what is pleasing to her and do not grieve her. Remember my son, that she faced many dangers for you while you were yet unborn. When she dies, bury her besides me in the same grave. Okay, so a couple of things here. So, so one, like there's the, the, the practical plot point. He remembers he's got money over there and so rather than the knowledge die with him, he calls his son, sends him, so that way his son can have money to provide for that. So, so that, that's one thing. Um, but beyond that, right? He, he's gonna go into a, a chapter long, basically what last will and testament, right? I pray to die, in case I die, like, like let me have one last conversation with my son, okay? And there's something just so beautiful and deep and profound about this entire chapter as he talks to his son. And so right, right away, I think one of the biggest things that stands out to me is behind everything that he's, he's, he's said so far and going to say, it's what he's actually done, right? I mean, it's an old cliche, but talk is cheap, okay? I can easily say one thing and do the other. And yet we, we, we almost got the reverse with Tobit, right? He's given us that example. And now as he's about to die, he, he, he verbalizes everything that he wants to impart on his son. But the, I think the strength, kind of the, the punch with that is the fact that his son has seen his dad live it. And so I love this chapter and it's a powerful chapter, uh, for me and, um, personal reflection. To reflect on my own relationship with my father, as well as to relation, to reflect on the relationship that I have with my children, right? And so, um, you know, to, to, to look at the, our, our relationships with our, our earthly fathers, right? What, what did, what, what strength, what, what, what wellspring of strength did we draw from them, from their, their words and their example, right? And like, just reflecting on, you know, the impact of the words when it was backed by that, by their lived, lived example, lived, lived witness. Um, just to share briefly, you know, a story from my own life. Um, I, I could share a lot of stories, um, in a relationship with my father. Um, but, but one story stands out in particular. Um, and so, um, it's just, it's a story of, of my dad and his relationship with his father. Um, my, my grandmother passed away when I was a, a senior in high school. And, um, it was, it was very, I was, it was very sad. It was, we, we loved her, like she, everyone, anyone who knew her loved her. The great Mama Naina. Um, but she was, she was ironically much healthier than my grandfather. Um, and so he was, his health was already deteriorating. She was in great health, she went in for procedure complications and she ended up passing away. And so anyways, shockingly, my grandfather lived for like another like 10 years, uh, which was, which was crazy. But, um, but, but something beautiful transpired over those, those next 10 years. Um, and, and that was basically my, my dad's regular visits with my grandfather. And, and what was interesting is that the, the, the frequency of those visits didn't lessen, but like increased. but like increased as my grandfather's health declined. And like, I very specifically remember those last two years, because, you know, it just kind of got progressively worse. Like initially, you know, he was able to walk with a walker, then walk with a wheelchair, you know, and then, you know, and then that was limited, you had to start feeding him, bathing him. And then there at the end, you know, he basically was confined to bed and, you know, you had to feed him through his stomach. But like, those last two years of my grandfather's life, my dad visited him every single day. And like, granted, it was, he lived very close by, I was a couple minutes away. But like, my dad was a busy man, like he was a lawyer with a demanding, busy job. He had five kids, one of them me, who all needed attention, for sure. And yet, he made it a priority to visit his dad. And like, what was so beautiful about that was like, there was nothing my grandfather could give him, like in those moments, especially there at the end, like where like, you know, wasn't able, even able to talk at the very end, but like, but just limited speech, and like he had dementia, so like, didn't even necessarily know that it was my father. And but just to see my dad go and talk with him, to share stories, to share about his day, to pray with him, to sing songs with him, I'm like, what a witness, like, ah, like, it deeply touched me. And like, and like, on the rare occasion, like he couldn't physically go and visit him that day, he still would call and have whoever was with my grandfather, put the phone up to his ear and talk to him. And so, like, that witness, like, my dad's given me lots of verbal advice over the years, and I'm forever thankful for it, but like, part of the strength of my dad's word is his action, right? And so, the love and the sacrificial love, the unconditional love, just like that response of love to his father, to walk with him and to be with him in those last, you know, years and then months and days. It's had a profound impact on me, and man, it calls me, ah, calls me on in the love of neighbor, especially like, it's easy to love, as Jesus says, it's easy to love people who love you. Like, what good is that? Even the bad guys do that, right? And so, this is beautiful to see that love that could not be physically returned in that moment, and yet the way in which he chose to honor his father, a father who had given him life and who had loved him, however imperfectly, and my dad returned that love in those last moments. And so, here, you know, returning to the story, you have Tobit telling his son, right? He says, you know, bury me, but like, he says, "Honor, do not neglect your mother. Honor her all the days of your life. Do what is pleasing to her and do not grieve her," right? What a beautiful, beautiful witness of like, again, I would argue, like stemming from his own relationship with his spouse, and so, asking his son to carry that on. And in such beautiful words to his mother, right? His wife, his son's mother, "Remember, my son, that she faced many dangers for you while you were yet unborn, right? When she dies, bury her beside me in the same grave," right? And so, just that, "Do honor your mother, right? Do what's pleasing to her, do not grieve her, right? She, before you were ever born, she faced many dangers, right? Especially, you know, back in the day, right? Childbearing was, could be a life and death experience. And so, you know, that her mother's, his mother's offering of her life before she ever got to hold him, ever know him. And then, you know, like when the child's growing inside the womb, can that child do anything for the mom? Like, the child's helpless, like it's, it's, yeah. And even after it's born, it's even more demanding, crying and pooping and so forth and so on, right? And yet, that sacrifice of love, right? And so, that proper response of sign to honor mother, right? That she's given her life to bear him and to honor and to respect him. So good, what a beautiful, just testament to moms, right? That, you know, each of us has that call to honor our father and mother, and obviously, it's a unique call when you were teenagers, rebellious teenagers, but that call continues throughout life to honor our father and mother. And so, a beautiful call to that from Tobit to his son Tobias. Reading on verse five, "Remember the Lord our God all the days, oh, sorry, all your days, my son, and refuse to sin or transgress his commandments. Live uprightly all the days of your life. Do not walk in the ways of wrongdoing. For if you do what is true, your ways will prosper through your deeds. Give alms from your possessions to all who live uprightly. Do not let your eye begrudge the gift when you make it. Do not turn your face away from any poor man. In the face of God, won't be turned away from you. If you have many possessions, make your gift from them in proportion. If few, do not be afraid to give according to little you have. To be laying up a good treasure for yourself against the day of necessity. For charity delivers from death and keeps you from entering the darkness. And for all who practice it, charity is an excellent offering in the presence of the Most High." So good, right? And again, like as we're reading this, it's obviously beautiful words, but it's words backed by his life, right? That one-two punch, okay? "Remember the Lord all your days, my son. Refuse to sin or transgress his commandments," right? And so, I love that, right? Act as though sin isn't an option, right? It's amazing what we can do when like, our options are limited, right? Recently, we were reading a book, a classic by Ernest Hemingway, "The Old Man and the Sea." It's an epic story of a man, a boat, the ocean, and a fish, right? But I don't want to spoil the story if you haven't read it, but essentially, like for him, there is no option other than to catch the fish. Like, there is no other option. Like, even if it means he dies, like he's gonna catch the fish, but like, like there's something about that, like, when like, that you act as though that's your only option. And so, I love that line, right? Because it's, like, would we approach like God and our relationship with Him and sin, like, as though like, loving Him was our only option? Like, let's take sin off the table. It's not attractive, it's not beautiful, it's not pretty and enticing. And so, like, we've gotta refuse it, we've got, it's not an option. And so, that kind of that mentality, you know, and so, the more we flirt with it, so to speak, we, we fantasize about, we idealize about it, right? We open ourselves up to it, like, the devil's more than happy to send his whispers, right? To the father of lies, you know, to deceive us. And so, just to push that aside, right? "Live uprightly all the days of your life. Do not walk in the ways of wrongdoing. For if you do what is true, your ways will prosper through your deeds." And so, again, interesting, right? Saying like, you're going to prosper. And it's ironic because he's just prayed for death, right? But I hope that that speaks to, you know, a deeper reception, like, sure, yeah, I'd love some money, I'd love some material wealth, but like, more than that, like, God can sat, alone can satisfy the deepest longings of the human heart. Our heart is restless until it rests in Him. And then, at the end of that last paragraph, at the end of this paragraph, a call to charity, a call to give alms, and kind of that antidote that it is, right? And so, to give of ourselves, to even give when it hurts. It's not easy. I don't mind giving out of my excess, but to give of, out of my, what I consider essential, right? That's a little bit harder, right? But it's a powerful antidote. It's a powerful antidote, right? One of the timeless, you know, practices of the church, right? One of the readings we read every, at the beginning of Lent, is that call to prayer, fasting, and almsgiving, right? And each of those is such powerful weapons, but that self-sacrifice, that gift of self, right? So that we don't raise this up to become our own God. And so, the almsgiving and in other ways, both materially, but just with the gift of our time and the, to, to that powerful antidote. So he continues, but we're gonna have to pause there for today. So let's, let's, let's close there. I know we were supposed to finish through chapter five, but there's a lot of good stuff here. So, next week, we will pick up here, we will finish Tobit's last fatherly, potential last conversation with his son, his fatherly advice, like, like, this is it, this is my treasure, this is what I want you to know. So we'll have to pause right there in the midst of things and see what happens, alright? So, next week, does Tobit get killed by God? Does Sarah's prayer a good answer? Does she die? And who's Sarah? Why is she in the story? What's gonna happen, right? Find out next week on the story of Tobit. Let's close in prayer. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord God, we just thank you for this day, thank you for the gift of the book of Tobit, of your word, which is your word that continues to speak to us these two, over 2,000 years later. So beautiful, right? Your word is alive, your word is living and effective, sharper than a two-edged sword. And so, it's beautiful how relevant this is to us today. There's so much that we can receive from this, and all that we're undergoing, all that we're experiencing in our life today. And so, we pray, God, for your grace, we pray for your mercy, we pray for your love and your peace. We pray, Lord God, that we can be a people of hope, even in the midst of darkness. We pray that we could turn to you for strength. We pray, Lord God, that we could cling to you in the midst of our suffering. We pray that we could enter more fully into your passion on the cross. We pray, Lord God, that we could live each day with a heavenly gaze, that it could direct and order our thoughts and our actions. We pray, Lord God, that we could, as men and women, as mothers and fathers, that we could, could give a witness like Tobit gives to Tobias. That we could speak to our sons and daughters, not just in word, but in deed and truth, in the way in which we live our lives, and pass on that testament of truth, that God is God. So we ask these whole, all these things, Jesus, in holy name, in the session of our blessed Mama Mary, as we pray. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now at the hour of our death, amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Thank you again for joining us, I sure appreciate it, and invite you to share the video. And can't wait till next week. God bless.